I'm going to call the meeting to order. So Laura Lee, will you please begin with the roll call?
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
She will is online.
Here.
Okay.
Extending remotely.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessam.
Here.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Here.
Thank you, Laura Lee. And Nancy, would you pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Stu, would you do the mission statement, please?
Sure. The Thompson School District will be a school that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you, Stu. Our first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda for today, September 18th, 2024. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So move.
Second. So it was Stu and Dawn, who second. Thank you. And Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Thank you, Laura Lee. All right. Item 3.1 is the approval of the minutes for our last board, actual board meeting, which was August 21st, 2024. Does anyone have any changes or corrections for the minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for May 21, 2024.
I'll move.
Thank you, Nancy. Second.
Who was it? Dawn?
Okay. Did you get that? Okay. So Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes were approved for August 21st, 2024, and now we have the approval for the minutes for our last study session, which was September 4th, 2024. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the study session? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for September 4th, 2024.
So move.
Thank you, Stu.
Second.
Thank you, Dawn. Stu and Dawn. You and Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Motion passes. So we'll move into public participation, and we'll begin with Dr. Schaefer's report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education and our awesome audience this evening. I am pleased to bring you our September update of things that are occurring here in the Thompson School District. We are pleased to announce that we are celebrating terrific academic achievement and progress across our district with 13 schools meeting or exceeding the median growth percentile on the most recent state assessments. One of the most encouraging signs from this year's state test results is the decrease in the number of students who did not meet expectations. As the district continues to implement new strategies and support systems, we expect these numbers to improve even more in the coming years. A special thank you goes out to our entire district staff team, as well as our students for their hard work and continued dedication to each student and family here in the Thompson School District. Yesterday, Thompson School District was proud to join our community in celebrating Constitution Day. September 17th is designated as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day to commemorate the signing of the U.S. Constitution in Philadelphia on September 17th, 1787. Schools in TSD hosted a variety of educational activities for students to learn more about our U.S. Constitution and its rich history. Last month, I was pleased to join members of the Board of Education, district staff, family members, and friends as we walked in the 2024 Corn Roast Parade in Loveland. Hosted by the Loveland Chamber of Commerce, the Corn Roast Festival is an annual tradition that brings the community together for food, fun, live music, and an excellent parade. It was great to see so many smiling faces on such a beautiful morning. Thank you to the community for all your support. September 3rd was designated as a professional development day for all staff in the Thompson School District. PD days are an important part of staff development as they allow an opportunity for team members to enhance their instructional skills, garner new perspectives, and learn from each other. Our first few weeks of the school year have been terrific, and we are thankful for your support. Grandparents' Day was celebrated at several of our schools at the beginning of September. Multiple elementary campuses hosted breakfast sessions or luncheons to honor grandparents and other important people in their students' lives. Celebrations such as these provide a great opportunity for community members to tour our buildings, meet our staff, and see the great work of our students. Our Board of Education hosted their first public engagement session of the new school year on September 12th. The forum provided an opportunity for members throughout our community to meet board members, learn more about their work, ask questions, and share their thoughts. We look forward to seeing you at our next session on October 21st here in the TSD Administration Building. The Alliance for a Healthier Generation has named Namakwa Elementary School and Centennial Elementary School as two of America's healthiest schools for 2024. This annual recognition honors schools for implementing best practices to support the health of students, staff, and families. This year, 879 schools across 30 states were awarded the title. Namakwa Elementary also received this distinguished award in 2023. Congratulations to both school communities. Congratulations to Kids Pack on the grand opening of their new facility. The nonprofit, which provides weekend meals for students in need throughout TSD, recently constructed their new home in North Loveland and hosted an open house earlier this month. This new building provides the Kids Pack team with the space they need to maintain their current programming while also giving them flexibility for future growth. At the end of August, leaders from the Thompson School District, Pooter School District, and Estes Park School District came together at the District Administration Building to continue their collaborative work in addressing youth mental health needs within our communities. All three school districts in Lemer County are dedicated to aligning our efforts, reducing duplication of services, and continuing to innovate our support offerings. Recently, a panel of teachers and administrators came together to visit with Ferguson High School seniors about various paths, skills, and struggles that they have personally experienced. This valuable discussion is so helpful as these students begin to make their own life plans after high school. So we have a couple of student recognitions that we're going to recognize this evening. And first, I'm going to ask Angelina Encarnacion, if you're here, if you can stand, please. Awesome. And let me tell you why she's standing. Congratulations to Angelina Encarnacion. She's the recipient of the Advanced Placement National Recognition Award and the Advanced Placement Scholar with Honors Award. This prestigious honor is given to students who have demonstrated exceptional academic achievement by earning an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. Angelina's dedication, hard work, and passion for learning are truly accomplishments and are to be recognized. Congratulations. That's amazing. And don't go too far. We're going to take a picture with you in a minute. But I also want to recognize, we have several other students from Thompson Valley High School who are AP Capstone Diploma recipients. And so I think some of you are in the audience. That would be Isaac Kreitzer, Marco Lapierre, and Kate Weemer. We've got one of the three, but let me tell you why we're honoring this individual. Thompson Valley High School is proud to announce three incredible individuals who earned the AP Capstone Diploma following their tremendous efforts in the 2023-2024 school year. Congratulations to Isaac Kreitzer, Marco Lapierre, and Kate Weemer. To receive the AP Capstone Diploma, students must earn scores of three or higher in AP Seminar, AP Research, and on four additional AP exams of their choice. Congratulations to these three students. Your accomplishments really make us proud. Congratulations. So if we can have these two students come forward, please, we're going to take a picture with you on the Board of Education. Okay, next, I would like to introduce to you our recommendation as the new Director of Infrastructure for the Thompson School District, Marvin Marv Carmack is, we are recommending for the new position of Director of Infrastructure. Mr. Carmack comes to the Thompson School District from Inglewood Schools, where he started his career in IT as a computer technician. This position he's held for four years. In this role, Marv troubleshooted AV equipment, performed network analysis, and established rapport with students, staff, and parents. He also repaired, maintained all technology. Mr. Carmack then transitioned into the Technology Manager role. As the manager, Marv managed computer techs and oversaw the repair, maintenance of all technology. He also coordinated and provided training for staff to maximize the use of district technology systems. Marv held that position for six months and became the Director of Information Technology, a role he has had for the past five years. As the Director of Information Technology, Marv oversaw the efficient and effective utilization of the information technology staff, provided technical and business training, motivation, and support. He also planned, administered, and supervised the system-wide implementation of the district-wide Student One-to-One Program. Mr. Carmack managed the procurement of IT and developed a long-term capital plan to help with the district's mission and vision for technology. We are really excited to welcome Marv aboard. He will be a huge asset for the Thompson School District.
It is an absolute honor and privilege to serve in this role. I look forward to each and every opportunity and challenge. So thank you very much.
Welcome.
Next, we are moving on to community and staff recognitions. As you know, each month we bring forward to you the Top of Thompson Awards, and these are peer-nominated awards of staff members in our classified, licensed, and APT positions, as well as our Community Champion Award. It's a new award that we started last year, which recognizes community groups, nonprofits, businesses within our community that have done great things for our schools. So our Community Champion Award is not able to attend this evening, and so we will honor them at our next meeting. And just to let them know, this is, they are the Stars of Honor. And it's Trevor Taylor is the head of the company, and he was nominated by Jamie Felton. So again, we'll recognize him next month. We're now going to move on to classified. And so I am going to introduce to you one of our amazing bus drivers, transportation individuals, and that is Dennis Faut. And Dennis was nominated by a number of individuals from Trusket, but I'm going to introduce Principal Karen Hanford, who's going to come forward and introduce the introducer.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. Dr. Schaefer, it's my honor and privilege to honor Mr. Dennis tonight. My name is Karen Hanford. I'm the principal at Trusket Elementary School. This is our fifth grade teacher, Megan Long. And we had the privilege of taking fifth graders to camp last year at Calwood in Jamestown, and Mr. Dennis happened to be our bus driver. So I'm going to let Ms. Long.
Sure.
Good evening. So Mr. D was our bus driver to and from our overnight field trip to Calwood, which is in Jamestown, Colorado. On our journey home, we were safely going down the one-way mountain dirt road when we were stopped by two approaching buses coming up the mountain. Mr. D was so cool and calm the entire time as he backed up the mountain until the other two buses could pass on their way up the mountain. The stress level was high for the adults on the bus, and the students could sense that. Yet, Mr. D got us safely down the mountain. He did a quick check of the exterior of the bus, then calmly asked if everybody just sitting in the bus was okay. I was really impressed. So he stayed calm under the stress and got us back to school in one piece. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
He used to also be our bus driver every day, so we've known Mr. Dennis for a long time. Very well deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And stick around because we'll take a picture at the end with all the recipients. So our next two individuals, I get the honor of introducing because our recipients are here, but the nominators are not there, so I will be going to the podium. So first, I would like to introduce for licensed Julie Sullivan, who is an ELD TOSA. So Julie, would you please come forward? And Julie, you received an anonymous nomination, so it's a big secret. But I'm going to still read the great things that this person had to say. Julie is always looking for creative ways to serve ELD students and ELD and other teachers in our district. She drives out to observe and coach. She helps add accommodations and differentiation to lessons and assessments, and she regularly presents and offers suggestions to colleagues and staff. Julie can work with any teacher or group of teachers on any problem. She never shies away from a challenge. She even has volunteered to give PSYOP presentations at schools she visits and lead ed camp sessions, too. Her great communication makes her easy to collaborate with, and her efficiency and no-nonsense attitude make the teamwork feel effective. Julie, congratulations. Next, I'd like to have Chastity Stringer come forward. And Chastity is our assistant principal, one of our assistant principals at Lucio Irwin Middle School. Chastity was nominated by Amelia Barnes. Teamwork was demonstrated by taking control as an assistant principal with being short-staffed in the office, all while taking control of CMAS and with staff interviews. She has been an amazing staff and administrator to work with. She deserves to be recognized for her dedication to our school and our district. Chastity, congratulations. Okay, so if our three nominees can come forward, we'd like to take a picture with you and the board.
All right. Everyone kind of squished together a little bit. Make sure I can see all your faces. All right. On three. One, two, three. Good. Thank you.
So last but not least, I'd like to introduce Mr. Theo Robison. Theo is the Executive Director of Secondary Schools, and Theo is going to introduce our school that we'll be presenting. And as you know, each month, we showcase a school here in the Thompson School District. And Theo, take it away.
So greetings, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the Board. I'm extremely proud to be here tonight to introduce our new principal at Walt Clark Middle School, Mary Lane, so she could talk about all the great things that's happening in our neighboring middle school.
Thank you, everyone. As Theo said, my name is Mary Lane, and I'm the principal at Walt Clark Middle School. I'd like to introduce my assistant principal, Chris Stein. We are thrilled to announce that our Colorado Department of Education School Performance Framework Score has risen from 39.8% in 2023 to 57.7% in 2024. This remarkable growth is a direct result of the hard work, dedication, and teamwork of our students, staff, and the entire Walt Clark Middle School community. We thank everyone who contributed to this achievement, and we couldn't have done it without your passion and commitment. Today, I have a little snippet of the people who are responsible for this, so I'll introduce them in a minute. We really look forward to continuing to improve our academic achievement and growth during this school year by continuing to push for excellence. This evening, we'd like to do a little showcase of some of the great things that make Walt Clark Walt Clark. So I'd like to introduce Liz Herricks.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Liz Herricks, the Instructional Coach at Walt Clark. So part of my role as Instructional Coach was kind of building our PLCs and a shared understanding, which we did across grade levels, focusing on writing. Some of the things that we did from electives all the way sixth through eighth grade, we deconstructed prompts and rubrics. We did school-wide writing. We did constructed response practice. You can see up there on the slides. I'm not going to read everything. We just really created a shared understanding around our goal, how we're going to get there, and through our weekly PLC, get to look at student data and made sure that we are all on the same page as a school, every teacher, every student.
Hi. I'm Christine Beebout. I'm the media specialist and one of our STEM coordinators at Walt Clark. Obviously, the work that our Instructional Coach does in our building is very important to increase scores, but we also take pride in having the only middle school to have a STEMX program that also helps increase scores with students. Our STEMX program provides curriculum that students would not usually get exposed to in their middle school career, but let's hear it from the kiddos ourselves, themselves, and not me. First up is Zane Hagenson, and he's going to talk about a couple STEMX classes he took and why they were important to him and important to kids.
I'm an eighth-grade middle school student at Walt Clark. The two STEMX classes I took that were my favorite were construction and electric vehicles. I liked construction because I built a model wall that was like real walls and houses, and I got to do the electrical stuff for it and wire up a light bulb. And the final test was like plugging in the wall and flipping on the light bulb and seeing if it actually worked. And then in electric vehicles, I learned how to solder and work with electricity safely, and that's what I enjoyed about the STEMX program.
Cool.
Hi, I'm Talon Myers. I'm an eighth-grade student at Walt Clark Middle School, and my favorite STEMX class I had was Drones with Mr. Custer. Drones with Mr. Custer provided a knowledge of the future of using drones in search and rescue emergencies to just having fun. We, I've shown my knowledge by helping Custer operate these drones and repair them and learn how to work them. And we have shown a higher understanding of these drones to our students by showing the way they can maneuver, to how they can get cinematic shots of like our school, and recording videos of like school events to get a better view. And I just love that class because I enjoyed having a hands-on project and learning how these work and how they can move and all that, so.
Cool.
All right. Hi, my name is Amanda Myers. I am the avid elective teacher and avid coach at Walt Clark. We are unique at Walt Clark that we are the only middle school with the Avid program. If you're not familiar with Avid, it is a college and career readiness program. We develop skills and mindset necessary for success in school and in life. We incorporate in all lessons at Walt Clark, the WICHER Strategies, and WICHER is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And we believe that that truly helps with increased with increasing scores as well.
The engagement that I've seen, I'll brag up on her a little bit, but the engagement that I've seen with our students in her classroom is like you can feel the excitement when you walk in. And so, this is just a little snippet of the wonderful things that are going on at Walt Clark, and thank you for inviting us.
Thank you.
Before you totally go, do any of the board members have questions for them? Or did you have something more? No, you were okay with questions?
You could come wire some of my house. I have problems, and we don't want my husband doing the electrical, so you could come do it.
Let's start down. Dawn, Jeff.
I just want to say congratulations to everybody for such a huge increase. I mean, that's just mind-boggling. So, way to go for everybody who did it. That's amazing.
Yeah, congratulations. Amazing work. To the two students, first of all, both of you were phenomenal public speakers, so thank you. Yeah, so hats off to you. And just curious, do you happen to want to pursue a career in drone or electricity or anything like that? Or?
Thank you.
Okay, cool.
I feel like if I get a career, I feel like I can.
For the students, also, have you had the opportunity to use what you learned last summer since the class was over?
Yeah, I.
Why don't you go ahead and come up to the microphone, so it'll be recorded?
Yeah, I got to fly around my drone over lakes and stuff. My dad's drone man got to see a bunch of cool stuff and take cool videos and stuff.
I had a competition with the car I built in my electric vehicles class, and I won the competition for the fastest car. And then, I also had to make some repairs to the car during that competition.
What, way to go, guys. That's terrific.
Nancy, anything more? Okay, yeah, just thank you so much. The kids were impressive. The whole outlook that you have on this year must feel really, really good, so thank you. Yeah. And Denise, did you have anything?
Just congratulations. I really enjoyed hearing about what you were.
Dawn, can you slide toward the mark a little bit, just so I can see your face? There you go. I think that's going to be pretty good. All right, on three. One, three.
Thank you. All right, 4.4 is our Board Committee Reports, and Board, I don't remember if I gave you a topic or not because I wasn't feeling well. So, I'm thinking that if you just talk about your committees, it would be perfect. So, let's start, well, let's start with Alexandra. You want to go first, please?
Sure. So, the committee, I had the Joint Insurance Committee, which looks at the insurance coverage for employees, so health insurance and vision and dental and things like that. Took a break over the summer, but then we did resume last week, looking at this for the first time for this school year. And it was good to all be back and looking at utilization data over the past several months, and beginning a little bit of a conversation about, thinking about how some of the insurance options might change a little bit for the next year, which the renewal for that will be next July. So, a ways, a ways in the future, but not that long. So, it's always interesting to learn that side of the healthcare stuff, and I enjoyed it.
My committees haven't yet started up, and so since yesterday was Constitution Day, I just figured I would just talk a little bit about, you know, that we are so blessed in this nation that there were those 56 brave men who risked their life, including their children and their wives, who signed the Constitution, which has allowed us to be one of the greatest experiments known. And do we always get it right? No, but the great thing about America is it offers second chances, third chances, fourth chances to everyone. And here, we can still have free speech, and it's all about, to me, is just being able to debate the merits of ideas and then just go back to helping each other, working together. And we really are, we really are blessed in this company, in this country, with all the rights that we have, and so I love to acknowledge this day.
Move on.
Okay. First of all, amen, Nancy, to what you said. My committees have already begun to meet, and I'm going to talk very quickly about two meetings that I had today. This morning at 7:00 AM, I met with the Board of Directors of the Berthold Schools Fund. This is the group that annually puts on the Berthold Bash. Those of you who have been around the Loveland Berthold community for a few years probably have heard of the Berthold Bash. This is a community organization run primarily by parents that, in the 15 years of existence, has raised more than $2 million for the Berthold Schools. And I, prior to my election to the Board of Education, I was a regular board member. Now, I sit on the board as an ex officio member, and it's always a pleasure for me to go to those meetings. And then, the other thing that I did this afternoon with, I think, three of my colleagues up here, we had the opportunity to tour the Landing, which is the teen shelter, which is currently under construction on the campus at Monroe Elementary. And even though the interior of the building is still pretty rough, it's easy, even at this point, to see what this is going to do when it's completed, probably in December or January, for the unhoused students in our community. So, yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to share with you.
My committees have met. On the 11th of September was SEAC, so that's the Special Education Advisory Committee. Sort of did an overview of the new staffing model that Laslow Hunt has crafted, and it's pretty, pretty cool. Things are grouped more into pods. So, there's one coordinator in charge of the K8s and charter, one coordinator in charge of elementary with AN and ILC, one coordinator in charge of the high schools, including transition and community connections, and then one coordinator in charge of middle schools and out-of-district placements. And then, each pod has access to a psychologist, so things are, I think, going to flow, you know, a little better as far as contacts and just the, they can support more schools, I think. We talked about PD and training. We talked about the SEAC recommendations and goals, so it was a pretty good first, first meeting for the semester, the year. Then, I also attended last evening the PI, Partners in Education, and we had quite a good turnout of grownups for the littles in early education, so it was, it was great. Lamb gave a very detailed, yet user-friendly overview of Head Start to all of the new, the new members. I talked, of course, about the budget. You know, what's interesting about Head Start is that budget goes from October to November, so it's a little different than the traditional budget. And then, we're thinking about new officers, so Lamb put the call out to, for new officers. So, and then, you know, what I appreciate a lot about PI is, you know, it's very accessible for everybody to get to because there's childcare and food and always pie, so.
Dawn?
So, DAC has met once already this school year, and we had a brief overview, just to bring us back to the state statutes that guide DAC's work, because it is one of the committees that does have some guidance that we have to do. And then, we gathered a lot of questions and ideas for topics throughout the year so that presenters, as they're presenting, are already given information in advance about what the people in DAC want to see as they're getting the presentations, which is really nice. It gives people a chance to think way ahead and to prepare and to come ready for those things that is interesting to the people in the room. And then, we had talked in our board retreat about giving DAC a charge, and so really having DAC give more than the recommendations that we've been doing for years, but a deeper level and a deeper dive into a challenge. And so, there was sort of a preview of what those might be and some discussion about how that might work differently than before. I also got to meet with Rotary yesterday, which was really nice. There's so much support in that room. You know, there's a member who's sitting up here who does, represents us well, and a lot of support in the room. And then, there were lots of events already at schools. I mean, we just hit the ground running when it comes to the school year, so lots of exciting things happening.
Thank you, Dawn. Denise, do you have a report?
Yes, and you.
Okay. I know, sometimes it's not there. All right, mine, I'm on the PCC, which is the Professional Concerns Committee, and our task for this year, primary goal, is to work on addressing some of the concerns that the teachers brought forward last year on here and coping with strategies to help with that throughout the system, basically. So, we're working on that. We found that an hour every month doesn't really seem to give us enough time, so we're expanding that and looking for a longer period of time so that we can have some good face-to-face conversations around it. And then, the other one is Teacher Education, Thompson Education Foundation, and they have always got a plethora of events that they're working on, activities, celebrations, ways to support teachers, ways to support students. One of the things that's coming up this weekend, if you have any free time and you can get a ticket still, is the Moonlighting Teachers, is a group of retired teachers that entertain people with songs and parodies from all about education, and it's quite funny. So, that's this weekend down at the Rialto. Anybody else have any other comments or? All right, thank you. That's all of our public committee reports, and we'll move now to public comments. So, I'll turn this over to Dawn, who will read the information about it and run the button.
All right. Because the Board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The Board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. The time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and each individual will only be recognized once. If there is a large number of speakers, the Board may elect to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topic related to the Board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concerns them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Personnel matters will be discussed in executive session. So, when I call you up and you start speaking, the green light will turn on. When you have 30 seconds left, it'll give you a yellow light, and then it'll start beeping when you are done. First up, we have Tom Pitts.
Thank you. I'm Tom Pitts. I'm a 49-year resident of Loveland and self-employed consulting engineer. When I heard the students from Walt Clark speaking, it brought back fond memories of the times my children were at Walt Clark. For the last several years, I've served on the Master Planning Committee of the district, and this year, I'm Chair of the committee. My remarks tonight are my own. The Master Planning Committee was established in 1995 by the Board to recommend capital facilities needs to the Board and to update the master, the facility's master plan in areas of maintenance, modernization, growth, and safety for each school. I like to emphasize that the committee is made up of community members primarily, and the recommendations that come out of the, of the committee are those of the community members making up the committee. The bond issue that is currently under consideration was developed by the community members on that committee. Developing the bond issue occurred over a two-year period of effort by the committee and with a lot of support from the district staff, fortunately. I would like to point out that our master plan include, for the years of 2024 through 2030, includes $400 million of needs for the district. The $220 million are the highest that are in the bond, represent the highest priority needs for this district, and we thought would be a wise use of taxpayer funds, and we're very much aware of that these funds aren't provided by district taxpayers. The bond funds will benefit every school in the district in different ways, depending on needs, and fundamentally, the bond issue will accomplish two things. It'll modernize and maintain the function and safety of our existing schools, and two, it'll meet the short-term highest priority growth needs in the district. In the process of talking about the bond, the money, the building, the property tax, it's easy to lose sight of why we are doing this. We are doing this for the children, and I would hope that that would be the forefront of your messaging to the community, to the voters, to the public. I would like to add that one of the great experiences of the, working on the committee has been working with our outstanding administrative staff, Todd Vicconi, Tara Flores, Kristen Batteig, Ryan Gordon-Jones, Lamb Cairo, and many others. And from an outside perspective, you can count on that administrative team to carry out your policies and directives and to meet, keep this district functioning on a day-to-day and year-to-year basis. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Board. I'm Kelly Seaton. I live in Berthold. And first, I just want to say really quick, I'm so excited about our girls' flag football teams. They are doing awesome, and I just wanted to say it was a great article in the Reporter Herald today, so that wasn't part of my, why I'm here, but go, go. Okay, so first, I'm here to thank you tonight for your vote of approval for the bond and the special levy for the 2024 ballot. It's grossly apparent our district's in dire need of repairs, upgrades, additions, as well as air conditioning. Our growth in Berthold is just. Our growth in Berthoud is just beginning, and we need these additions to attract and retain staff and students in Thompson schools. While I wholeheartedly empathize with the Thompson School District voters this election year, because there's a city and county tax increase also on the ballot, I just simply ask voters to take time and talk to any student in our district about why they should vote yes. Don't talk to me. Don't talk to our awesome, you know, bond supporters. Talk to the students and ask them why we should make an investment in our future. While I am an eternal optimist, ask anybody, if it should fail, our district needs to lead the way to advocate a change to school funding at the state level. Creative funding for electrical upgrades, air conditioning, need to be explored. Additional information sessions for continued budget transparency and community education need to happen. If you heard, more than 20 school districts are on the ballot this November asking voters for $6.4 billion in tax measures. That number is increasing daily. Nine districts were on the ballot last year, both for mill levies and bonds. Only two passed. Three districts are repeating their plea again this year. This is a cry for help, that funding for education in Colorado needs an overhaul. I'm going to try to get through this last part without crying. Lastly, I've only been a parent for 15 years. I tell my kids that daily that I'm learning to do this every day and trying to do the best I can. This past week has been one of the hardest weeks because every email I receive from your district regarding threats to my children's schools, unsubstantiated or not, sends me into a roller coaster of panic, sending my kids out the door every day. I can't imagine the decisions that you all have to make to inform us, parents and public, about these events. I just want to simply ask that our district and law enforcement community continue to hold these students accountable for these actions. I don't have solutions or suggestions because it's beyond my realm of expertise. And just in a perfect world, I wouldn't be here talking about either of these things tonight. We're all navigating this together, and I hope we're all doing the best we can. Thank you.
Megan Locke.
My name is Dr. Megan Locke, and I am representing a group of parents and athletes regarding the termination of Coach Torres. Even though this is a personnel issue, parents and athletes deserve to know why Coach Torres was not given a second chance. We are aware of a survey that was given to students at Thompson High School regarding pronouns and preferred names. Did those teachers get coaching after sending out the surveys? We are not aware of any coaching that was given to Coach Torres, so why was this not the first course of action? There were numerous individuals that spoke last month regarding Coach Torres's termination and concerns about due process. What actions have been taken since the last meeting? We're not asking for specific details, but parents and athletes deserve to know if any course of action has occurred since the last Board of Education meeting. Is anybody able to answer that? I don't know. Okay. In that case, I know you can't answer this next question, but the next question that this group has for you is, do you have a plan to conduct an independent investigation? There are several members of the Level &amp; High School Girls Cross Country Team who wanted to be here tonight but could not, so I am relaying an ask of them to you, the Board of Education. We hope the district investigates Coach Torres's termination so we can have our coach back for track. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Reggie Johnson. My pronouns are she and her. I'm the president of PFLAG Fort Collins in Northern Colorado. I'm here on behalf of PFLAG families in the Thompson School District and across Northern Colorado. PFLAG's mission is to create a caring, just, and affirming world for LGBTQ+ people and those who love them. I am also a proud parent and grandparent of kiddos who are part of this marginalized community. Malcolm X has stated, "Education is an important element in the struggle for human rights. It is the means to help our children rediscover their identity and thereby increase their self-respect." I believe education is more than reading, writing, and arithmetic. It's about gaining the knowledge and skills needed to become a better person and to create a better society in which to live. According to the Trevor Project, 41% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. That's more than four times more than their peers. These youth are not inherently prone to suicide risk because of who they are, but rather because of how they're mistreated and stigmatized in our society. This includes the classroom and the school environment, but having at least one affirming adult can reduce the risk of a suicide attempt among LGBTQ young people by 40%. That adult may be their parent, but it also may be their teacher. When looking specifically at transgender youth, the statistics are even more alarming, with up to 56% considering suicide and 23% actually attempting to end their life. This is unfortunately evidenced by many stories I've heard from PFLAG families who found out that their child is transgender at a behavioral health center or an emergency room. In response to this hate nationwide, PFLAG has seen a large influx of what we refer to as refugees, which are families who have moved to the area in order to flee states where they faced extreme discrimination against them and marginalized of their trans loved ones. They come to Colorado where our school boards have policies to protect and create safe spaces for transgender students. The bottom line is that the work that Thompson School District and your Board is doing to affirm each and every LGBTQ student, particularly transgender students, is literally life-saving. It's imperative that students, all students, exist in an environment where they are safe, supported, and even celebrated. When a student doesn't have to constantly worry about who they are, they're able to focus on who they can become. For students who are affirmed at school, surviving is a reality and thriving becomes an option. On behalf of PFLAG, thank you to the school district for what you're doing to care for our kids.
Okay. This concludes our probably participation, little brain fog, I guess. All right. Next item will be the action consent items. And these are the items that we have presented to us at a previous meeting or at a study session, and involved items that need approval. I'm going to read the list before we continue, and I'm going to ask board members afterwards if there's any item they want pulled for further discussion, then let me know, okay? So here are the items that are on our list. 5.1, approval of personnel, extra duty, and coaching recommendations. 5.2, approval of expenditures over $50,000. 5.3, approval of gift and donations. Somebody's reading that. Dawn, it's okay, thank you. Not yet. 5.4, approval of adoption of the Thompson School District Board of Education Legislative Platform. 5.5, approval of Buckingham and South Side ditch water share sale contract. 5.6, approval of the City of Loveland Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, for Energy Assistance Program. 5.7, approval of federal grants and Head Start Policy Manual. 5.8, approval of Thompson School District Accounting Policies and Procedures and Federal Grants Fiscal, Physical, Fiscal Policy Manual. So, board members, if you have an item that you want pulled for further discussion, would you let me know now?
Instead of pulling it during, before we vote, can I just make a comment during discussion?
Sure, we can do it that way.
I'll just do it that way.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody else have any items? Okay, how about any discussion on any of our items? Do you want to go ahead and make your comment now? Yeah, go ahead.
It's in regards to the Legislative Platform. And so this is something that Stu Boyd started last year.
I don't remember when we started.
Anyway, at first, I wasn't certain about it, but then, as we worked on it, there was a lot of good conversation that we had. And then when I saw the final product on September for study session, there was a part of me that was a little uncertain because it seemed really kind of heavy on some of the inclusion in mental health, and I wanted to see more emphasis on education and academics and funding and so forth. And as I thought about it, it just seemed that it's not, it's not a perfect document, but I think that the work that we did made it a really good start. And so I'm supporting this because I know that this won't be the first time that we look at it, and that probably as we think of more things and work together more, we'll find different ways to improve it, add to it, expand it, and so forth. And so I just wanted to share those thoughts with everyone about how much work went into this and how I went kind of full circle, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, Dawn, would you please read the gift and donations?
There was a $5,000 donation to support class, to offer support with classroom supplies for 10 teachers at Truskin Elementary School from Subaru of Loveland.
Thank you. All right, since we didn't have any items pulled, do I need to reread the list? Are we good? We're good. Okay, I will take a motion to approve the list of items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
That was who? Dawn and Stu. All right. Any further questions or discussions on it? All right, Lauralee, please call her on.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman. Denise.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Remfeld.
Aye.
Thank you, Lauralee, and it all passes. Thank you. Appreciate that, Nancy. All right, 6.1 is, nope, 7. Where are we? No, we're on 6.1. Okay, that would be assessment update. Hi, Dr. Schneider.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the school board, and Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services. Tonight, I bring to you an annual presentation on how we have done as a district, performance-wise and academically, as well as places where we can highlight efforts to improve moving forward and required communication that I need to give you from our state in terms of our school ratings. So without further ado, I'm just going to get going on that. This connects very strongly to our STRIVE 2025 Areas 1 and 2, Student Achievement and Inclusive and Supportive Culture. Our aim is to be able to provide access to an excellent instructional experience for our students that maximizes academic performance and student well-being. This presentation will include academic outcomes and plans for continuous improvement across our instructional system. A little bit of background, each year, our district receives a District Performance Framework, also known as the DPF, from the state, and each school receives a School Performance Framework. These frameworks drive our Unified Improvement Plans. A Unified Improvement Plan, or a UIP, is made at the school and the district level, and you need to use the data reflected in your report as areas of improvement. And the purpose of this presentation is to highlight our areas of celebration as well as an instructional vision for moving forward. Great news is, there's a lot of celebrations this year. Very pleased to share those with you. This year, as you probably read in our local newspaper, it was our highest score on our District Performance Framework since the framework began in 2016. We didn't have a score for a couple of years during the pandemic, but this is a huge celebration. We increased up to 60.9 points. We were up 5.8 points from last year, and we are accredited with performance. A side note is, I was really interested to find out how unique it is to improve 5.8 points, and I actually did poll the improvement levels of other school districts across the state. And for the 170-ish school districts that are in the state, only about 15 of them improved more than 5.8 points. So that is a large margin to improve, and so I'm very proud of that as well for the school district. 24 of our schools were accredited with performance, up from 19 last year. Four of our schools qualified for our School of Distinction Award, and last year, we did not have any. All of our high schools are accredited with performance. Our graduation rates are record high, and the district made significant gains in student academic growth. What I have for you on this slide and the next one is the front page of our District Performance Framework. You can see our score off to the right there of 60.9%. And you can also see that our growth in achievement are still approaching levels, but we also have strong post-secondary and workforce readiness in the performance area. This is on the lower part of the first page. You can see that we meet some standard assurances with participation rates. You can see on the bottom, which is a place that I go to quickly when this comes in, is how did each of our levels perform? So you have elementary, middle, and high school. And elementary, we are, we are meeting in achievement, in approaching, in academic growth. In middle school, approaching, in both areas, and in high school, meeting in all of those Now, while there is a ton of data I could provide to you, I did select some basic slides to be able to show you how our performance was. I am more than happy to provide and get my assessment team to be able to provide for you any other mix of data that you would like for us to pull. So I'll go off of these tonight, and I do want to thank Director Remfeld for being able to point out an error on one of our slides, which I will be correcting in the moment tonight and then sending you that correction. So I do appreciate that, Nancy. So on this first slide here, we are showing how many, the percentage of our students who meet and exceed the, the performance requirements on these state assessments. So on the left, you see elementary school, and on the middle, on the right-hand side, you see middle school, and the gray bars represent how the state did. And on the left-hand side, the colored bars are for the different, last three years of our performance as a district. So you can see where we've, we've flattened out a little bit in elementary school for English Language Arts. We are very aware of that, and we are working very hard to, to drive with the science of reading and make some improvements in that area. So we held steady there, and in, in middle school, you can see that we've made gains. And in the elementary, we stayed above the state, and in middle school, we are still edging towards the state performance. While I won't go through every single bar on this, you can see the same pattern in terms of a state gray bar and the comparison of our different, a few selected groups that our District Performance Framework tracks, and you can see their comparison to the state performance. You can also see the performance of our, the students who are labeled as gifted and talented. And this is for grades three through eight, English Language Arts. For our math scores, this is the slide where I will make a couple of corrections for you. So on the orange, green, and blue bars that are on your left-hand side, those are good news, but they should read 33.9, 35.3, and 39.8. So there is a, an incline there, and in, and in all cases, we are outperforming the state in elementary math. On your right-hand side, those three bars should read 27.4, 26.5, and 26.8. On your right-hand side, those three bars should read 27.4, 26.5, and 26.8. And I'm pleased to see that middle school math is increasing. And we've, we've had some challenges in terms of last year, we, we, we didn't have the growth we wanted to see in middle school. And this year, we are really turning the corner. So that is very promising to see. Again, for the same, the same format here, we have the disaggregated groups that you can take a look at. I will tell you that on a future slide, but I will point it out now so that you can actually see it mathematically with your eyes. Multilingual learners and students with disabilities are two groups where our district is going to be really targeting improved practices. And they will be written into our District Unified Improvement Plan because the disparities in those two groups are greatest. And I want you to be able to kind of see that when I mention it later. In high school, we compare with our PSAT and SAT scores in the 9th, 10th, and 11th grades. We had, across the state and nation, the SAT and PSAT ran a brand-new test. It was an electronic test, no longer paper and pencil. And it was a completely different test, and it was also re-normed. So that is why you don't see more than one year of comparison here, is because it is not an apples-to-apples comparison. The celebration, as you can see on the left-hand side, is in our, in our English Language Arts. We outperformed the state in every single grade level. And over on your right-hand side, we, we did that with 10th grade. And we are still creeping up on the state mean scale, score averages in the other grades. Some other celebrations, our matriculation rates. Our matriculation rates, just so you know what those are, are what we, what we are tracking that our kids do when they leave us. So do they go off to serve in the military? Do they enter the workforce? Do they go to college? Do they go to technical school? And we, we follow, as much as we can, we follow up with what their plans are and what they are doing. And we were able to actually increase that last year. We went from 31, I'm sorry, 38.1% to 40, 48.4%. So we had a 10, over 10% growth in matriculation rate data this past year. Also, we have one alternative education campus, Ferguson High School, in our district. It was a tough year statewide for AECs because the state included chronic absenteeism and truancy and factored that into our scores. This took a lot of AEC campuses down in their scores this year. And ours barely moved. And so we are very, we're celebrating that very, very much. We have a wonderful program at Ferguson High School. This slide is an annual requirement if we have any schools that have been listed on priority improvement or turnaround status. So that is why we have required communication to publicly announce that we have schools on, on this particular status. Last year, we had a handful of them, and this year, we have one. So I'm, I'm here to tell you that the Peak View Academy at Conrad Ball is on priority improvement. But I also want to mention in the same breath that they are very close to being on improvement and made significant gains in their score last year from somewhere in the mid-30s to in the low-40s. So we're pleased to see the improvements that are being made at Peak View Academy at Conrad Ball. So moving forward, the next step is, is all of our schools, as well as the district, need to submit a Unified Improvement Plan to the state. That's due on October 15th. I am very excited next week at DAC to share this information and get their input. They will see these data, they will be able to talk amongst themselves and, and ask questions and give some inputs so that I can include that in our District Unified Improvement Plan. These plans are written for a two-year period of time. One was written last year, and I do make tweaks to that because it is a two-year plan. So we will be, actually be looking at what we said we wanted to do last year, take a look at our, our fresh data, and update it to, to reflect where we need to work next year. The major improvement strategy, M.I., also known as an MIS, is what I spoke about before. One of our major improvement strategies is going to be on multilingual learners, their growth, and on students with disabilities, their growth and achievement as well. In the plan, oh, that's fine Lauralee, you can just keep going. So I want to talk about our major improvement strategies a little bit more. So we have two areas that the state asks us for, academic and culture and climate. So we have to name ways in which we are going to measure how we are improving in these areas. The, as a sidebar, the state doesn't offer like a standardized assessment for culture and climate. We actually use our own, and that's the Panorama Survey Data, which you all have been familiar with. So as I mentioned, multilingual learners and students with disabilities, we want them to increase their academic growth. Their academic growth is in the low, single-digit percentiles. We want to see it at 50. 50 means you're making at least a year's progress to be able to catch up to your peers. 50 or more. So we're really targeting those, those groups intensely this next year. We will monitor them with iReady and with our standardized curriculum assessments. And for our culture and climate goal, we want students to be able to report an increased sense of belonging. We will be measuring this with our Panorama Student Survey Data, which is a survey that happens in the fall. Last but not least, how will we do this work? You have seen this image before, although it's a little more polished-looking than it was a year ago. I, I am not high-tech, so I actually had some help with this, but I'm pleased with how it looks now. It's our instructional vision. And we take a look at these three areas that are on the outside of the triangle, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. But the center of the triangle, you see an acronym which stands for Professional Learning Communities. Professional Learning Communities are what the school district allows to have happen on Wednesday mornings. Wednesday mornings, our families and our students stay home for an additional hour. And what I love to be able to answer the question is, is if somebody asks me, well, what is that hour at home away from school doing for my kid? We have an answer to that question. Because our teachers and our administrators are taking a look deeply at data literacy, which is on your left-hand corner. And that is what guides on the top our professional practices. What does the data say about what our students need? How do we need to plan our instruction to deliver and actually move our student outcomes? And over on the right-hand corner, the supportive and inclusive, or inclusive-supportive culture, what is needed as a foundational place for students to feel safe and to grow academically? I also want to, I just presented at Rotary yesterday, and a great question came up there that I want to share with you all. I shared this slide with them and spoke about it. And they asked about school safety. And it is a, a good thing this year that I want to say that about 30% of our time at, or more at our administrator meetings, I share with my, my colleague, our Chief Operations Officer, I'm sorry, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Todd Pecconi. We share that time so that the principals and our administrators are instructed in safety and security. We have upped the amount of time that we are spending on school safety, sense of belonging, because we want that for our kids and for our families. Last but not least, before I ask questions, or ask for your questions, is I don't think this accomplishment would be made possible without the wonderful students and our teachers and our staff that have worked so hard at being able to overcome what has, the drop back that we experienced from going through the pandemic. We are now performing at rates that are far beyond that. And I, I do look forward to reporting to you next year, hopefully even better news. But thank you very much. What questions do you have?
And so the data, it really was fascinating. And even spite of the 20 and 2021, you could see from 2017 to today, the amount of change isn't a lot, which to me is a good thing because there was such a gap with the 20 and 21. But the biggest thing was on the 8th grade math, is that it actually increased like 16% from 2017 to the 2024. I mean, that's, I didn't, when I, I didn't realize that till I saw it. And I thought that was, that's huge. So, and even as I say that, though, I go back to, we still have nine elementary schools where the proficiency is under 35% in reading. And four middle schools were for 8th grade, the proficiency is under 44, or is under 35%. So I guess I would like to ask, and I know you won't have the answer tonight, is to contemplate, because I know we have some additional supplemental and budget approval process, and it's okay Gordon, don't get. What would it look like? What could it look like if when we go to finalize the budget for this year, what additional resources can we give these elementary schools for the 3rd grade that will help this year really push them up? And same with the middle school 8th grade math. Whatever we've been doing with 8th grade clearly is, is working, so if we can do more. But that's, and again, I know it's a question you can't answer, and you probably have to get with Gordon. And he's going to tell you, you can have way more teachers for interventionist, and yeah. But anyway, I thought it was, just looking at it from that perspective, it really did show a lot of good improvement.
I appreciate that feedback, and we'll provide you with a future update.
Stu?
Couple of things. First, Melissa, will you send us the corrected slides?
Absolutely.
With the, the new numbers? And then, if we can go back to the slide that's entitled "Other Results", it's back a few. Yep, there it is. Would you talk about this slide in a little bit more detail? I'm a little confused about the matriculation rate concept. Also, and I'm reading that last year, the matriculation rate was 38.1, and we had a 10.3% growth in one year. But the bullet above says that our district is at 48.4, the state is at 57.2. So can you explain? I'm obviously delighted to see the growth. Can you tell us why we're about 10% behind the state in the matriculation rate?
I certainly can get that information for you. And I am going to look back at Theo Robison. He oversees, the director who does report this information, he may have more details.
So greetings, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the board. So we did a lot of work last year. And let me go back two years ago when we disconnected from the Naviance system, where all of our information was originally housed for whether students were going to college, going to the military, or a variety of different other places. So when we saw that drop from what we previously had, which I can't remember right now, before we were at 38.1%, it was higher than that for sure. That transition year, going to Exello, had an impact on that because we didn't have access to that previous Naviance data system anymore. And we were still learning how to get this information and put it into the Exello system. So one of the things that we were able to do, thanks to Andy Stevens, our Director of College and Career, and Tyler Schlegel, our College and Career Coordinator, was go back, work with Naviance, but then also work with our teachers about making sure we also have the accurate information in our Infinite Campus system as well. And so a lot of work between the teachers and the counselors, inputting the information in our IC system, and then also working with CARRY as well to ensure that we can get this data housed in the right location as well, so it can have a better pool. We certainly expect it to go up again in another year as well as we're strengthening our system to ensure that the right data is in the right tool, so it can be reported accurately.
So is what you're saying, Theo, then, that the fact that we trail the state by as much as we do actually has to do with changing a system, a program?
Yes.
And perhaps these numbers aren't really accurate?
I'd say our data should be higher. That tracking system is critical in ensuring that our staff members are putting the right information in Infinite Campus. And we put a lot of work into that system. And we're doing more work in that system as well and training our teachers on how to make sure we get the right data in the system and the counselors.
That's reassuring, because that, when I saw that number, I thought, whoa, that's a lot. It's one thing to be, to be behind another district or a state average by a point or two, but 10, or almost 10, is quite a bit. So your explanation makes sense to me. And yeah, we'll look forward then to increased growth that's perhaps a little more accurate in terms of its reporting. All right, thank you.
Indeed.
Amy? Dawn?
I just had a, a couple of thoughts when you were presenting. I did get to hear it twice in 24 hours, so that's lovely. It's nice to get to hear that. So one thing I noticed this time was, our high school are meeting. And elementary was, was also good. And there's sort of that messy middle of middle school years, which is not named that by accident. But one of the things that, that I have as a takeaway from that is that we, we really don't expect that kids come into the system as early childhood and kindergartners with nothing to learn. Because why would we send our kids if we already knew what we needed to know? And it is really ultimately our goal to get them where they need to be by graduation, right? That's a moment where we say, this is what graduation means, it means the same thing. And so while it, it's helpful to get other milestones throughout, the fact that our students are where they need to be as they're getting into high school, I think says a lot. Because it means that all those times in between, in that messy middle that we all go through and we're literally learning something, is what we're doing. That's what we're here to do. The other thing I'll point out, because it comes up every time we look at the standardized testing results, and it just frustrates me to no end about how terrible it is that we have a system to measure things without necessarily connecting it to all of the things it's supposed to measure. It is ludicrous that we have a system that is measuring the end-of-the-year expectations with 20% of the year left. That, if that was what we were doing out in the, in our work, we'd say, forget it. This is garbage. It's not fair to measure me on stuff you haven't even taught me yet, let alone given me a chance to learn and practice. And we do that year after year with students. So any student, so like, when I look at where we are now, that 60% rate, what that really translates to, if people stay on that same track, and I'm assuming that nobody else gets better from that either. It means that our students overall are like at 80%, which is phenomenal, right? It really is. And, and of course, in those 20% of the year that's left to teach kids, lots of them are still learning and changing their track as well. You know, there's a lot of stuff that kind of starts to make sense at some point. And so I just want to point that out because it's one of the things that's silly about how Colorado does things. But you made another point yesterday that I think is, is connected to this that I wanted to highlight as well, which is talking about the fact that Colorado has some of the, the least amount of hours or days in the school year nationwide. And I had a, a former educator come to me afterwards and say how important that was, that you, that shocked her because she came from another state, and they had 180 days. And she was like, I can't imagine what, how we're going to cram everything into those 20 less days. And yet somehow, we do. You know, I would, I would absolutely put our students, especially, you know, our graduates, up against people from all over the nation, because I, I do, a lot. And we have a lot to be proud of. In fact, I believe we have the highest population of post-secondary in the nation. So, you know, while Colorado doesn't put our kids through enough public education, we're putting a lot of people through college. So we make up for it. And our, our students are ready to do that. And they're doing it at really great schools. And so I just really wanted to point that out because those are all things that are challenges in what's presented here. And you guys very rarely even bring it up unless we do first. And so I'm going to say that for a little bit because we're knocking it out of the park on, on a whole bunch of things that don't exactly make sense and don't line up. And you guys stand up here and actually still, like, give it your all. Those are not excuses, but they are absolutely important things to know about this.
Does Denise have anything?
No.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Don't, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I do not.
Okay, there, I heard you. All right. The only thing I have is, as the schools are writing their unified, UIPs, Unified Improvement Plans, are they taking those two main points, like what you talked about with multilingual learners, and the culture and climate as part of what they're working on in that as well?
Yes. As a matter of fact, we have EC-12, which is all of our district administrators come together, we have one tomorrow, and we had one just a couple of weeks ago, to discuss just that. For me to, to come forward and disclose our, our district goals, and say, these are the areas that our district is, is really focused on, and the schools having some cascading goals, and our own professional plans being able to impact those goals, that the answer is yes, and we are working on our culture and climate goals tomorrow, and a couple weeks before we worked on our academic goals.
Okay, thank you. I just was curious. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was really beneficial, and we're excited. All right, the next item is our website and technology accessibility, and I think it's Mike and Kelly. All right.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, and Dr. Schaefer. Kelly Sein, Chief Technology Officer, and I have the pleasure of presenting with my colleague, Michael Hausman, about Website and Technology Accessibility Update. So, the accessibility update and the new law that we're going to be discussing is related to Strive 2025 by creating and improving access to district services, communities, and technology for all students, families, and staff and community members. The Colorado law makes sure that we have persons with disabilities, while we strive to make sure that we have an inclusive and supportive culture within our community. Colorado laws for persons with disabilities makes it a state civil rights violation for a government agency to exclude people with disabilities from receiving any services or benefits because of a lack of accessibility. This legislation became effective on July 1st in 2024, and applies to all district software, websites, multimedia content, documents, desktop computers, computers, and mobile So, one in four adults in Colorado have a disability, and one in eight students in Colorado are enrolled in special education. Sometimes, this could also be related to either a permanent, temporary, or situational When we look at our web content accessibility guidelines, they're a set of successful, success criteria adopted by the Colorado Technology Accessibility Rules to ensure compliance with the new Colorado laws for persons with disabilities. These guidelines are also referenced by other federal regulations. They include the Twenty-First Century Communications and Video Accessibility Act, and the Americans with Disability Act. These guidelines apply to all software, websites, multimedia content, documents created for the Thompson School District.
Okay. Before I continue, I do want to just quickly spotlight the amazing work that has been done by Mr. Matt Beal. Matt is our web developer, and he is seated right behind me here, I'm not trying to embarrass him. But Matt has been the person who has really spearheaded the charge on all of our accessibility working on the district, and he's done a terrific job, learning about all the requirements, and putting together the, the committee, and coordinating that work, and doing all this stuff with our website, and working with people in the schools, et cetera. He's done an awesome job, so I just want to make sure that we could congratulate him and thank him for that. So, one of the first things that was done was, we put together the Accessibility Committee. The committee itself is a group of individuals, staff members from across the district, that has come together to really help guide us through this process, and to make sure that we're, we have voices from across the district in evaluating website pages, and talking about tactics, and how we can move forward, et cetera. And one of the things that they put together was a Technology Accessibility Implementation Plan, and as you can see, there are four aspects to that, evaluation and remediation, skills and training, and accessibility statement we put together, and then also some work with our procurement process within the district. So, I'm going to take you through just some of the things that we have done, to kind of give you an idea of what that looks like. As you can imagine, there is a lot of material that is generated by district staff at the school level, and also at the district level, for students and staff and community members, you know, the general public. So, one of the things that we put into place, this is for examples, but Grackle Docs is a extension that is now present in the district's Google Workspace. And the way this works, this is the first year that, that we're using this, the way this works is, it's a lot like a spell checker. So, if you have a Google Doc, or a Google Slideshow, or a Sheets, or anything that you've imported into that format, you can, you can essentially have it do a accessibility check, and it will point out, it will point out any errors that are there, and also provide some solutions for what you can do to make that section more accessible. It's really slick, it works really well, we've been rolling that out for staff members, and everyone in the, in the district, as a staff level, staff member has access to that, it's just a plugin that's in their Google Workspace. Canva, Canva, if you're not familiar with that, is a, it's like a graphic design program that people can use. They also have a really good accessibility checker that's available there, so that's, that's one thing that staff members can use. And then, just your Microsoft Office Suite has an accessibility checker there that you can use, and then Adobe Acrobat, for like, when you're creating PDFs, it also has an option there that you can use for doing accessibility checks. And we have all this available at our Accessible Docs website, that's there for staff members to utilize. Also part of that, so SilkTide. SilkTide is a program that we run, it's a, it's a tool, basically, that scans our district website, as well as all of our school websites, and what it's doing is, it's looking for accessibility errors. And similar to what Grackle Docs does, it's highlighting those, and that's so that the person who's working on designing the page can see it, and can address it, and fix it before it gets released to the public, and, you know, help prevent people from having to reach out to us and asking for an accommodation. There's also other wave extensions, as they're called, for other websites that we utilize. And then, I would say probably the biggest thing that really has helped move this forward was that, last fall in 2023, Matt led the charge in creating a new accessible template for the district. So, if you'll remember, our website design changed at the district level and the school level, and those were all built with accessibility in mind, and trying to make sure that we are doing everything we could to make them as accessible as possible for the community. So, the other big thing that we're also working is on skills and training. We want to make sure that our staff members have a way to learn about accessibility, and to learn about ways to make things more accessible. It's a, it's kind of, I would say it's kind of an adjustment to your thinking, you know, I think once you, you do it a few times, you just naturally kind of gravitate to it, but you need to train people on what to look for and what to do. So, one of the things that's put together is an inclusive design, basically a, a package, it's an inclusive design guide that TSD staff are able to access on the portal, that provides them with just some basics on what to look for and what they can do, and it's also printable, you can do it, you can print it out as a one-page, or we also have a large print format that people can print out too, so that they can have it handy for when they're working. In addition to that, we're also providing some training opportunities. We're going to be providing some additional inclusive design basics, training courses, and some ways to incorporate universal design for learning within the classroom, as well as more role-based training and documentation, and we'll be providing some more information to staff members as that, as we move forward. But, the training portion is really a big part of where the work is going to be now, in addition to continually working on what's in the system and making it more accessible, the training as we move forward is a big part of what we're, of what we're looking to do. All right. The other thing that we did was, we created an accessibility statement, and this is open to anyone who visits the link, it's just at tsd.org backslash accessibility. This accessibility statement, it talks about our goal to meet or exceed the accessibility standards that are there, and then it also provides ways for community members to provide feedback to us, so that if they see something that they, that they think needs to be adjusted, or if they just have a general question, there's a way for them to reach out to us, and it also provides a way for them to request an accommodation as well, okay? And then, the other thing that's been added on there is a section that has some third-party resources that people can utilize as well, if they're interested in the topic. That's all available at that webpage on our district site. Last thing I'll talk about is procurement. So, one of the things that a lot of people don't understand is that the accessibility requirements don't just apply to the stuff that we create and that we distribute in the district, they also apply to material that's being offered by third-party vendors. So, what that means is, that means that we need to have an evaluation process in place to make sure that the vendors we are working with are providing, whether it's software or information or material, we need to make sure that they are also meeting those standards too. And so, one of the things that the Accessibility Committee is doing, and will be doing moving forward, is working with all of our departments in an evaluation process of that, so that that's one of the things that's checked when we're going through the process of contracting, making sure that our, these third-party vendors we're working with are aware of the requirements of what we need them to do and stuff, and also to ensure that we have a way to provide feedback with them, to make sure we can get them where we need them to be and stuff. All right. So, with that, do you have any questions for either myself or Kelly?
Start down here. Don, question? Amy?
Question, Mike and/or Kelly. You were talking about additional training for staff that is, is available, is available or will be available. Is it part of PD? Is it part of the professional development that's currently available or will be available?
Yes, we have been, yeah, and Matt, Matt has done some trainings and stuff at PD, we've done some around like website work and stuff like that too, but that's one of the key places that we'll be rolling that out, because that's a good place for us to be able, an opportunity, I should say, for us to be able to work with staff members and provide it. But, I will say this, I think that it's important for us to make sure that we have lots of different opportunities for people to get the training, because there's a lot of competition for what, what you can do on PD days and stuff, in terms of the topics and what you can learn more about. So, a lot, that will be one of the aspects we provide, as well as some other opportunities for staff members.
Would any of this training be available for credit?
That's something I'd have to look into, possibly, I don't know, but maybe, probably possibly.
It might be more attractive to staff if they
Yeah.
Thought that they might also be able to get credit in addition to enhancing their skills.
Yeah, it's possible someone's already applied, I'd have to look.
Kelly's going to address that.
She's creeping up on you.
We also have it as part of the Required Public School Works training that everyone is doing. So, this accessibility work that the committee has been working on for the last year, it's already embedded into our Public School Works, and it's required.
Okay.
Yeah. So, there's a course that's available there for all, for all staff members that they'll be having to complete here at a certain point in time.
I just wanted to clarify, so, are we just, we're not just talking about the website, we're talking about always. So, my question is, when you were saying mobile devices and all this other, what, how does that play into, like, the non-verbal students? Does that, what kind of tech, is there tech that falls into this for non-verbal, or is that something like different, that's separate?
So, all of the devices that we currently have, our Chromebooks and our iPads, have accessibility features built in. And then, if there is something that is required for a student who might be non-verbal, then we work with the team and learning services to identify those needs through an IEP, and through some different pieces, to make sure that they have the stuff that they need. But as of right now, all things that we have within a Chromebook and an iPad have accessibility features built in.
So, that will allow them to communicate? Okay.
Alexandra?
So, I have a question about, like, so, say, can you provide an example or so of, say, like, if you ran this Grackle Docs or one of those things, what, what's an example of something that that would flag as being inaccessible?
Sure. So, I will give you an example of one that we just had today, when we were meeting in Cabinet, we were looking, Dr. Schaefer's chuckling, because he knows exactly where I'm going to go. We were, we did a, an accessibility check through Grackle of our Cabinet Agenda, which is a very, very long document, so it took a little bit of time to, to generate, but one of the first things that it did, for example, in Google, that document has a name, but the document itself, it just goes right into our district logo and then a bunch of information. So, one of the things that it flagged was, you really need to have the title that's on your document as part of the document itself, because if that, for some people, that would not be obvious for like a screen reader or something like that. So, it's things like that, it's making sure that things are congruent, that things are lining up right, it's looking at contrast, it's looking at like images, it's making sure that alt text is there in case an image needs to be described, things like that. So, we, we did the check, and it found some errors, and it was, it was interesting, good, it was a good demo that Kelly did with us.
Does Denise have any? Denise? Oh, no. No. Okay, thank you. You know what, this was great, I was curious about where it was going to go, and I mean, I, I read through it all, but you know, until somebody talks you through it, sometimes you just need to hear it, so it was very helpful. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for letting us do it for you. Thanks.
Of course. All right, seven point three, nope, six point three. Seven point three?
It is.
It is seven point three. Oh my gosh, my brain is so bad. Hi, Todd, is 2018 bond summary update?
Yes, good evening, Madam President, Board of Education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd Pecone, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Tonight, I have invited Tammy Knower to give us really a celebration presentation on the 2018 bond. If we reflect back, just seems like yesterday, or twenty years ago, you know, in 2018, the voters, you know, passed the bond, and since then, the amount of work, coordination, when you look at what it takes from all departments, schools, community, everyone here, you know, on staff, on Tammy's staff, to implement a bond, you'll see that started at a hundred forty-nine million, end up at two hundred and nine million, is a huge celebration. So, just a quick shout out to that, because it is a monumental undertaking, and we've done it in a way that's been transparent, and really impacted what we wanted to do was the students. So, I'll invite Tammy.
Good evening, I understand I'm last, so Todd said as long as I'm done by ten o'clock. No, thank you, Madam President, Board of Education, and Dr. Schaefer, for a chance to get in front of you and report on the 2018 bond. I plan to just summarize the executive summary that was submitted in July, so I'll go over kind of a high level of that detailed report, and make sure we're on the same page as we end. So, in summary, this is in alignment with Strive 2025 for being transparent and being a good steward, steward of our resources. To me, that means both financially and of our facilities. So, at a high level, that table there shows, like Todd mentioned, that we started with a hundred and forty-nine million, and later I'll go into the details of how we got to two hundred and nine over the five-year period. And then, we spent eighty-five percent in three years, so our goal was by January of twenty-two, we beat it by month and nailed that by December. The reason that's important is, school districts use that eighty-five percent in the first three years for reasonable expectation of spending those resources. It shows that we're on a good timeframe, we're addressing the critical infrastructure needs that we're in the bond, we're not just letting it sit in the bank and gain interest, and we're taking care of business, in other words, so. And then, the facilities, we're completing what was promised, there's some reports later on that show how we address the line items of the bond, and then, very inclusive, part of the culture here and what we wanted to implement was making sure we use integrated design and construction approach, which simply means we include everybody we can that has a foot in the door of education. I could build the best building out there the way I know how, and I'm not a teacher, I would not be able to build it to the best needs of the kiddos. So, that's one of our goals for sure. So, as Todd mentioned, the overall timeline, it flies once, all the hard work was done before November of 2018, good planning with estimating inflation contingency numbers, those estimates all turned out really well. Staff positions were filled by January of 2019, so we hit the ground running with that. In the green, at the bottom of the timeline, you can see how much we spent by the end of those years, again, getting to that hundred and fifty million by December of 2021. The big unknown there was March of 2020 with COVID-19 and how we reacted to that, and I do have more info later on in the slideshow for that too. We did finish in the five-year October of 2023, but we were able to come to the board and to our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee with a plan for spending the extra six point six million, which again, I'll detail a little later on. So, we are finishing into 2024 this fall with some of those contingency projects, and we actually have two that need a little more attention. The funds are good, but we will be going into 2025, finishing up two of the projects that we approved in October. So, you start off organizing and planning for the bond. Again, work in every building was critical for that bond, for it to pass, our promise to the community, and the way the numbers were put together, and we achieved that. That includes support buildings and every school building we have, and our charter schools, our partners with them, they also received funding. And our charter schools, our partners with them, they also received funding from the bond. We coordinated an extensive major with finance and procurement right out of the gates, again, finance, identifying budget codes, cash flow, how we were going to actually dispense the funds as payment requests and invoices came in, procurement to decide how we would select different vendors, materials, equipment, that kind of thing, and laid out the plan for that. And then the guidelines, we focused on those three buckets. Educational specifications were important. WOLD, Architects and Engineers, came in and worked with some of the board members, Cabinet staff, to identify a short, high-level plan of what's important to our district to include in all of our educational facilities. The technical guidelines are written and maintained by the Director of Operations, Kristin Batigi, and we use those to give to our construction teams out of the gates, too, to say, hey, here's our standard, this is where we want to begin with all the work we do for the consistency and quality reasons. Excuse me. And then this bond was different than a bond I've worked on before. We were blessed with 4.9 million of premium that we allocated through the board for fixtures, furniture, and equipment. And with that, we had Innovation Day, if you guys remember early on at Thompson Valley High School, where we invited staff, superintendent, students, parents, to work together in the cafeteria and come up with ideas and, again, standards for the district. We also had a couple of open houses where vendors brought in furniture to help us identify quality, consistent furniture throughout the district. And the results of that were three books with options that we're still referring to today as principals call. HR, we were able to get some chairs for Tom and his team over there. It's nice to have that reference book that you can go to, you know who you're working with and what you're going to get for the dollar. So to implement the bond, after all that planning, of course, the schedule, we looked ahead and said, how best can we spend these funds? And one plan that we put in place was divvying up the work by feeder system. So by doing that, we also secured our contractors' design teams right up front in feeder system packages. It gave them a chance to look at the whole bond program holistically, instead of just one project at a time. By doing that, we moved some projects up, we actually moved, I believe, two projects back, just where they fit into the overall better. And I'll talk later why that was important, to have our contractors onboard. The design process, again, this very cumbersome diagram shows the amount of communication and integrated approach that goes into the projects. On the left side, the Design Advisory Group, led by the principal, they put that together, including staff, parents, custodian, and other community members, all the way to the top right, which is all the internal departments for Thompson. And then, of course, the reporting up and down the chain, from the Operations Director, Kristin, to the Chief Operations Officer, which is now the Assistant Superintendent of Operations, all the way to you, the Board of Education at the bottom, we had the Bond Advisory Committee. Cabinet members were on the Bond Advisory Committee also, and then the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, which was integral in doing a lot of what we needed to do, and I'll talk about them more later, too. Excuse me. So budget tracking, the dollars is what it comes down to and what we really want to be transparent with every move we make. We talked about the 85% in three years, why that was important. We leveraged the funds of the bond, and I'll talk about that a little bit more on the next slide. But in order to get grants and funding from some other sources, some of them have to show that you have funds to either match or to help complete a project, and then they're more willing to give you some of their funds to complete the work. And then we also added $11 million of assets, and that was land sales from the facilities building to Ferguson, and then various land sales that happened. Just a portion of those were also allocated by the Board of Education to the bond work. So the best result we had was the grant awards. Thank you. When we talk about leveraging the funds and getting the most for your dollar, we were very good at that, and it took a team. So when you look at the best funds alone, those are typically split up where you go to best with a overall project and the cost for that project, and it's a 70/30 split, roughly. Get to the little percentages. 70/30 will get you there. So we provide 70%, they say, okay, we'll give you the other 30, and we're able to add scope. In some cases, we were able to use those funds just to cover some of the bond work, again, to free up the bond dollars to go to do the additional scope later on, too. So this list of grants, let's see, the best is pretty detailed there. The inflation one was for Con Ball and the renovation to Peak View. We did run into huge inflation after COVID, and luckily, BEST was able to provide that, so we did secure that grant. The security grant under BEST was for the middle school entries, we were able to upgrade the vestibules. Still have more work to do there, but we did address a lot. Peak View, that playground grant was actually sought after by the principal. Val went all out to get that and secure the $700,000 so we could make an accessible playground there. And then E.S.R., I do have a correction, that should be E.S.S.E.R. for elementary and secondary school emergency relief. And that provided additional furniture at the high schools after COVID for return to learn, and some of those efforts, also improving the air quality at a number of sites with different filters and upgrading equipment. So with all those extra funds, we were able to leverage them, like we've talked, into contingency projects. And contingency simply means funds that are set aside for unforeseen conditions, emergencies, or changes in the scope of work. Again, early planning in 2018, set aside the proper amount, you usually plan for 5% contingency, and luckily, we did, and it was able to help us through the hard time of COVID and other changes and unforeseen conditions. Overall, at the end of the bond, we ended up spending only 3.5% overall in contingency. So it worked out really well. We came to the board in October of 2023 with this list of extra projects that came from a collaboration of staff, other items on the old bond list that maybe didn't make the priority one, two, or three to get on the list, and we were able to address a lot of sites here, as you can see, Lublin High School, the three fields were upgraded, finishing up that right now, including the ADA walkway to the fields. Excuse me. The main IT server room, you don't think that supports kids, but we all know how bad it is when the internet phones, everything else does go down. And Kelly's team has been very flexible with us as we work through that difficult project, finishing that up. And then, of course, just a little bit of pocket change there to cover the extra management for that extra year of managing these projects. So reporting and transparency, again, so critical to the culture and to our charge here. The Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, we call it CBOC, was made up of multiple community members, business leaders from all communities that we serve. The Bond Advisory Committee was made up of Dr. Schaefer, Cabinet members, Todd and Kristin and I, the Director of Operations, and Assistant Sub of Operations, and then, of course, the Board of Education, reporting and making sure you were informed and part of any major changes throughout the six-year period. We also did expense reconciliation with finance. If you think of it, we maintain budget planning tools on our side for the funds, and then Business Plus is the district system that actually tracks the actual incoming and outgoing funds. So reconciling to that has been very key, and that's going to be ongoing through the next six months, probably, as we close out and try to get down to the dollar, make sure we're in good shape there. All that being said, that box there with the check marks, we had regular meetings with all these entities, diverse members, inclusion, visual aids as needed. CBOC was very good at requesting aids that they could use to go out into the community and better talk about it. And we tried to keep the updated information out there and address questions as they came in. Excuse me. So again, reporting. So I talked earlier about the 1,059 line items of the bond. We did track those line items, they were packaged, so 30 line items might go all together into Kerry Martin Elementary, for example. But we did track them individually also to report on that, again, being transparent, making sure we were taking care of everything the voters voted for back in 2018. The priority numbers, priority one were very critical items, system failures, safety and security issues, asbestos-containing materials, we tried to get those out soon. Priority two, or a little less, more like flooring repairs, basic things that had a longer lifecycle remaining. And then three were more aesthetic, maybe signs, outlying sidewalks, those kinds of things. And the bar chart there is from April of 2021. I just wanted to give an example of how we did report as we started completing things, and those bars turned greener and greener right to the end. So COVID-19, the joy of that hit in March of 2020, like we all know. I listed some of the items there that we'll go over. The biggest thing is we had 13 major projects underway, over 90 million of committed contracts and expenditures out there. That's a little scary, but it also helped us because we were ahead of the game. We had a lot of the materials ordered, we had our subs wrapped up. The bond funds were a guarantee when the rest of the nation did not have the funds guaranteed like we did. So we were able to proceed, and those were the big projects. You had Riverview, the elementary additions down in Berthoud, Ferguson, the Van Buren renovation, and then Stansbury. So to have those five big projects underway and secure really helped. We, like everyone, social distancing, lockdowns, and providing daily protective gear for the workers on site was a constant shuffle, and it took a lot of the subcontractors out of sequence. So the worry there, when you're working a little out of the norm, is how that'll affect schedule and cost. And our vendors, again, being onboard early and wanting to work also through those hard times, bent over backwards to make it work. I experienced spot pricing for the first time in my career, which is where some of the materials we did start ordering during 2020, they would not guarantee a price until the day it was delivered. So you'd get an estimate, and our contractors would have to deal with that. You know, we had contracts, and they were able to stay within that, again, using a little bit of contingency here and there to cover some of the fluctuations, but in general, we were able to stay right on track. Inflation was also a big one before COVID. I don't know if I said this earlier, but it was 6% per year was the construction inflation. After COVID, between '20 and '22, it was 1.6% per month. So in that two-year period, our contractors estimated a 40% inflation rate in a two-year window. The early contracts we talked about, the other piece of that was having flexible financial team with us. Again, when you're working from home, systems are down, we still have to pay these people to keep them coming, and Gordon's team was key in making sure that we didn't have any hurdles there at all. So our teams wanted to come to work and actually keep going for us. So again, you get to the end, this is a summary, I'll go through a little bit, but I can't say enough the importance of accurately reporting to our stakeholders and making sure they know, I mean, I'm a stakeholder also, and I want to know where these dollars are spent, and that I'm getting what we all voted for, regardless of the district you're in. Our buildings are used by a lot, which equals maintenance concerns. Our buildings, they get worn, to say the least, and that's what we do, is we provide those facilities. But it's also important to understand that the typical budgets a school district receives from the state cannot keep up. So the community was so critical in allowing us those funds to do what the normal budgets can't take care of. So when you work down this, again, we went from 149 million to 209. The premium was originally estimated at 14.9, and we almost doubled that, and that's not due to poor planning, that's just due to great planning and a good market, good timing on Gordon's part. Interest, again, was estimated at the beginning at 5.9, and we came in right at that, and that's always good. Grants, we knew we were going to go for some in the beginning, but we realized 15.5 million of additional funds by the end. And then the 85% in three years, we beat that by month, and that's the first number I put up on my five-year schedule when I landed here, was December was my goal. And then duration, we went from five years to six years because of the added scope, not because of delays that we could have had because of COVID or other factors. Touching every building in the district was a huge charge, and we ran into some unforeseen, but we were able to navigate those. So to follow up on what Dr. Schneider said earlier, is we need sound buildings for excellent education to happen, and the community made that work. So we're very blessed to do what we were able to do in this six-year period. Are there any questions?
Questions? Let's start down here. Alexandra, anything?
No, I don't have any questions, but just thank you very much for your work on this massive project over the last several years, and all you and your team have done is impressive.
Thank you.
Tammy, the teen shelter was not tied to the bond issue, is that correct?
Correct.
That kind of came to fruition after the voters had approved the bond issue, and the teen shelter, I believe, is completely paid for by grants, correct?
Yes. Yes. Alongside, you know, the other major projects starting right now is the expansion, the one classroom to a TCC in Ferguson High School, and that is also not bond-funded. We are managing that project, but it's not with bond funds.
All right. And then, then something that's not a question, but I want to thank you during your presentations for making them understandable, for having them be very well organized. I appreciate, and I'm sure my board colleagues appreciate, too, that the last slide always says, "Thank you, voters," because without the voters having approved this, our students wouldn't have the amazing amenities that they've been provided. And the other thing that really became very obvious to me, as I've heard you do the presentation, the various presentations, is that the success of this whole project really was a team effort. It wasn't just your bond team. There was certainly significant input from business services, there was input from operations, probably there was input from technology and from learning services at times. And as a school board member, I really appreciate the fact that as this all unfolded, and now that it's come to fruition, that this was really the result of a team effort. So thank you to you and to all the rest of you who made this happen.
Thank you. And when you think people, you believe it, you think it, you say it, and then you show it.
Yeah.
And I think you just got to keep repeating that when you want something to be believed.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Amy?
You know, as you were giving this, you know, massive overview that, again, is very well put together, organized, user-friendly, all of that, I was just thinking, you know, about the collaboration, but, you know, just that it's been, you know, this beautiful dance of, you know, collaboration, accountability, flexibility, you know, COVID in there, like all things, and so, yeah, it was beautiful, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Don?
Similar sentiment, which is several things you said had me flashing back to work that we were doing five and six years ago, and I forgot. And all of those were really heavily community-led or high community engagement, and we had such a strange monkey wrench that was thrown into all of that, and yet, we still didn't stop and, like, compromise on community engagement. We had to adjust and adapt on how we did that, but ultimately, that remained a huge priority and something we did everywhere. And I also want to appreciate you, as the queen of understatement, especially this evening, there are some things that you made sound like no big deal that are ridiculously big deals, like 40% inflation, and you're like, oh, yeah, but really, you know, we managed it 3.5%. What? Because you did. And I say "you," and I really do mean the whole team as well, because there are lots of things that went into making sure that we didn't get impacted the way of things that went into making sure that the, that we didn't get impacted the way so many other people did. I know that there were times when you were scrambling to try to make sure that the impact wasn't that bad. And it's queen of understatement of just being like, no, we got a plan and we're going to fix the plan if we need to change the plan, and it's just great. So thank you for keeping your cool, which helped everybody else keep their cool to get all this done, because it's, it is a lot, a lot of work.
Thank you. I think, I'd only like to close saying that community members, if you want to be involved, it doesn't have to be bond program, anything you want to do at your school, go to your principal, reach out, there's so many different committees to be involved with and we can't do our job without that input.
Does Denise have anything? Okay. All I can say is, we've done a lot in the last few years, last six years. When I think back and reflect on TCC being over there, and it's like when I came on the board, it was still an elementary school. You know, so it's just, there's been so much change that's occurred over the last few years. So thank you. The dance that went on between all of the people that put this and accomplished this is amazing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.